All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for July 11th, 6:00 PM. Please rise the invocation and pledge of allegiance, the invocation given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Dear Lord, first off, I'd like to thank you for each and every one of us this evening. Thank you for keeping us healthy and safe. And Lord, I'm asking you to touch each one of our families. Lord, you know the needs that are in our own households as well as the needs of our community. And I'm asking that you give each and every one of us wisdom and guidance as we make the decisions that we need to make this evening. Lord, give us special insights so that we can do exactly what you would have us do in our community to meet everybody's needs, in Jesus' name, amen.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
First, under consent agenda, we have the minutes from June 27th, 2022. I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 27th, 2022.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a second reading, this will be a public hearing for ordinance number 09-2022.
An ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida providing for title of the ordinance, providing for replacement. The previous solid waste code under Article 2, collection disposal, provide for solid waste collection to be city utility. Providing for definitions, manner of collection by the city and customer responsibilities and provisions, providing for open top roll-up containers and compact containers for waste which were not collected by the city, providing for service charges, ministry rules, rates established by resolution, providing for prohibition of hazardous waste or biohazardous waste and other prohibited acts, providing for enforcement, providing for codification, appeal of conflict and codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for securability provisions of binding and effective date.
Okay, as I said, this is a second reading, we've discussed this at length. We will open a public hearing for ordinance number 09-2022, it's now open. Anyone wishing to ask any questions or wish some concerns can now do so. Seeing no hands, public hearing for ordinance number 09-2022 is now closed. Any questions from council or staff?
I actually have a question on this one.
Go ahead.
If you go to page 8 of 14, number 2, it says, "No person may call on behalf of the waste generating resident." So, if I understand that correctly, no, nobody else is allowed to call, should the property owner not be able to?
Yeah, the property owner should be the one that calls for it.
But if they're not able to?
Well, I think they would just need to explain that to the city and that they'll act responsibly with regard to it. But it's to address a problem we've had with people, you know, being out of town and then their neighbor wants to dump twice the load. So they dump stuff on the neighbor's load, knowing they're out of town, say, "Oh, well, yeah, they want to pick up as well." So, that has become a problem, so that's how we're addressing it. So, if they could realistically address that, then, you know, somebody who's physically unable to do so, they'll deal with that.
All right, I just need a little clarification on that.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Section 8233, number 1. This is page 7. I just want to make sure, it say, "Only bulk waste generated at the same resident or commercial address may be placed for city pickup." So we talked about two different residents. So I just want to make sure that this is what's covering the two different residents that we talked about. One, bringing trash from another area, county, and because that is your resident, that is a no. That's what they're saying, right?
That's right, this is to address the same problem that we were talking about just now. This is, you know, people, you know, a similar problem, I should say. So we have, you know, people that, you know, maybe they have a rental house in another city. And they just bring all their garbage in, put it in front of their house because we're kind enough to collect it, whereas the city that other houses in is not. And so, we're trying to make sure that this is only the resident-generated waste and we want to be as generous as we can with the resident without, you know, having everybody having to pay rates that cover people bringing stuff in from outside. Anything else you think of?
And we was talking about the one, I think Mr. Rick had mentioned that because he was doing some type of construction work, it was cheaper for us to move it instead of him taking to the dump. That is for that too, right? Because it is not that particular resident where the waste is generated.
Well, it may generate on the waste, but if it's, if it's a contractor, doesn't matter what it's generated, on property or another property, they still have to take it off. In that case, they don't, they don't get to say, "Okay, well, we'll give you this lower price" because the city's going to haul your stuff away for you. They need to haul it away as part of their price because it's a fair thing to do to other people that, that, and they're paying the rates.
Okay, any other questions?
I just had one question, we have in here that you can, certain timelines that we can place the cart out by the curb in specific times, you know, not before 6:00 PM, not after, or something like that. Can we have any kind of a timeline as far as people putting the bulk waste out there? Because if it's only being picked up every two weeks, I know they've talked about the truck going by picking up a big bunch of garbage and then the very next day, a lot more garbage being placed out there. And then if it's going to sit there for two weeks, I think that's what looks really ugly.
I guess the question would come down to is, how accurate is the actual schedule of the picking it up?
Right, it's, it's supposed to be according to here, like on the second pickup day every other week. So if that were the case, could we say, you know, by, no earlier than the Sunday of the week of pickup? Or three days prior to the day of pickup, or?
I, I would think that it's probably similar to putting out the garbage, but since it's going to be stuff that is not necessarily related to garbage, but other items, I would think it'd just be, let's see, we'd have to deal with it on a reasonable manner right now and then, and then see how that works out. If we have to add in, you know, you shall not put this out anytime earlier than this. But they're supposed to, some of the ways they're supposed to call for, that's a totally separate item. You're referring to the stuff that they're going to, it'd be automatically picked up.
The two cubic yards of bulk.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's not going to be there more than a week, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's going to be there a week and then they're picking up the following week if they missed the day after or something like that, but.
Isn't it every other week that they're doing one week bulk and one week yard though, right?
Right.
So it would be a two-week window.
Two-week window, you're right. I mean, and if it turns out to be, you know, unsightly and a problem, then we'll have to address that in a small amendment for this. So, as I mentioned, we did this, so we rewrite these types of things in a global manner like this. We always have a little bit tweaking here and there that has to be done.
Okay, and then one other little small thing is the yard waste. Can it only be two cubic yards as well, or is there not a limit on yard? I know there's a limit on the bulk waste being two cubic yards.
Yeah, I think there is a yard waste, like, this can't be like whole trees and things like that. Is it, when they're, I don't recall.
Yeah, it had to be in the bags or tied up, certain weight, certain length.
But there's not a limit to the amount of bags that you can have, or the amount of bundles that you can have?
It says, "Except for tree trimmings, yard debris shall be placed in plastic bags or other containers with contents not to exceed 40 pounds. Tree trimming shall not exceed 40 pounds in weight by inches in diameter or five feet in length and shall be tied and bundled or containerized not to exceed 40 pounds in weight. Bulk yard waste in excess of 40 pounds, five inches in diameter or five feet in length shall be cut in smaller pieces by generator of such bulk yard materials."
So you can have 20 bags of yard waste that are less than 40 pounds?
Yeah, I would think so.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
But I would, I'd be 20 bags of leaves, I would think, it would be much more in there.
But that's what she was asking, if there was a limit to how many bags are going to sit there for two weeks.
Yeah, I don't know, no, I don't think so at this point. But like I said, we may have to tweak that if it becomes a problem, a slightly problem. But we're trying to be as generous as we can to start out with.
Yeah, I just, I actually just had a dead palm cut down and I asked the guy how much it was and he said, "You want me just to leave it out here for the city to be picked up?" It's like, no, I think a palm tree may be too much, even though it's dead. So it was a little bit extra more for him to take the dump, which makes sense because I can take a thing to my dump too, which is what you're supposed to be doing, so I have no problem with that at all.
Are we still hauling our tree branches and things like that to our own landfill?
Right now, no, but next when we get into that budget, we're going to be asking more employees, but right now, no.
I see.
But that's what we're hoping to get it back, open up, and get a person out there working it full-time.
Yeah, I think that's the whole issue, is that the trucks were getting full and then we were losing so many man-hours to go all the way out to the Glorita landfill and come back, plus the large fee associated with that, whereas our own dump, it's obviously far cheaper and it's much closer, so. If we can get that back up and running, then it may not be a problem. But if we're still going to have to continue taking Glorita, then, yeah, we may have to limit that, but.
When I think a lot of that goes into, I understand, like, maybe we could have put two cubic yards in there, but when we see that much, well, we need to look at like, well, they didn't trim that many trees around here, bushes, so it's probably coming from somewhere, someplace else. I mean, that's what we're running into now, so.
Yeah, okay. I guess we'll leave it as is for now and see if there's issues going forward, maybe we can tweak. Anything else for this ordinance?
Hey Jake, number 7.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't think the council agreed to it, but it was discussed about the stolen container that they have the opportunity to put in a police report.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be done administratively, dealt with staff-wise. And I think, you know, if it turns out to be, you know, a problem, which I can't imagine it would be, you know, they're going to, they're going to be, they're obviously going to implement it in a fair manner. But I, I think we're apprehensive to just simply say, "Well, we'll, we'll cover all stolen ones" because then everything would be stolen.
Yeah, okay, so number 9. I'm trying to figure out what is the purpose of trash cannot be put out before 6 o'clock PM the day before collection, and it can't be put out, meaning the, the container can't be put out after 6:00, the day of the collection. What is that about? A lot of people get up in the morning and put their trash out right before they go to work.
Well, they're taking the risk that they're going to miss the garbage.
That's the only purpose of, but they can't.
Yeah, those are fairly typical type of provisions, simply saying, "We don't want your garbage out there for two or three days." We just want it out there, it's going to be collected within a reasonable amount of time. We know that you may be too busy in the morning to do it, so you can put it out the night before. If you've got a problem with raccoons, you can put it out in the morning, but, you know, if you do it out later in the 6:00, 6:00 AM, you take the chance you're going to miss them.
Okay, so you're saying, if you put it out past 6:00, it's possible you can miss them and now you wanted to sit out there till next?
Yeah, that's right, you can't, after, after 6:00 AM, if it's still out there, it's going to be out there for the next, the next pickup, which might be a problem for code enforcement.
Okay, I got one more. And that is, I, I may have missed it, but I'm looking for the yard bulk being placed on other residents' property. I didn't, I didn't see anybody say anything about placing it on other residents' property. If you go on certain particular streets, is, did anybody see it? If you go on certain?
That's under the 82-34, subsection 5.
Section 5?
B5.
B5?
Yeah, it's on page, towards the bottom, middle of page, 9 of 14.
9 of 14.
Yeah, just above 82-35, reserved. Yard materials must be generated only from the yard or residential property from which it is generated, not from any other address or location.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And my last question is, I got a lot, I'm sorry.
One more.
How is this stuff weighed? This, this trash, this bulk, you know, the two cubic feet? I think Mr. Randy told us it was the size of a, back of a pickup bed.
Yeah.
How is it weighed? I mean, how are we going to bill the customer? Because, you know, you can, you see the big scoop and it picks it up and put it on the truck. I mean, bulk is already on the truck.
Yeah, I mean.
So how would it be determined how?
They would measure it before they pick it up, but a cubic foot, obviously, or a cubic yard is the defined number. You know, you can, you're guaranteed to know what that is. Simple measurement by measurement by measurement, you know how many cubic yards it is.
And there are ways to weigh it if need be, but I think it'd be mostly estimated, but it'd be generously estimated. And then, you know, if it's a problem, obviously, they're going to, then they're going to make sure that it's enforceable.
Yeah, I guess my biggest question was, is a resident come down to the city complaining about the bill that they received because they didn't agree with, you know, the price that was sent to them in the mail, you know, that they want a cutoff.
If they leave, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
They leave too much out, we're driving by it, and code enforcement's going to come and cite it. I mean, we're just not stopping just because you want to keep putting a ton of stuff out, that's what's got to stop. So they, they, they're going to, it's going to take a while, they're going to have to learn, you can't like put so much out. You're going to put these piles out now, we're not going to sit there with a clam truck to pick it up. Code enforcement's going to get involved and we're going to cite them. Then if we end up picking it up, cleaning the city up, then they're going to get a bill.
Yep.
I think that's good actually, because there's times when you might have a little excess and you may not have a storm or something like that comes and you put excess out there and turn around and don't pick it up and you give me a little notice saying, "By the way, you had too much, what do you want to do?" And that gives me enough notice, which is about 30 days or less, to make an adjustment, whether to take half of it out for half out later or take it down myself. So, I don't have a problem with that at all, because if we all make mistakes, it's clear you're going to be making a mistake. And so, somebody comes by and says, "You made a mistake, you put too much stuff out there, we're not picking it up." It's like, oh, okay, well, a responsible person goes to action, takes care of what needs to be done. If they don't, then they pay the price, so I have no problem with that.
You're probably going to see five or 10 small companies pop up that have a truck and a trailer. Every time they see a big pile by the road, they stop by and say, "Hey, by the way, I'll pick it up for," you know, wind up being 10% cheaper than whatever the city charges, you know, you name it, so. In a lot of communities, that's, that's what happens.
It's okay too.
All right, anything else?
Good job.
Seeing no hands, we have a motion for ordinance number 9-2022. Oh, we have, yes ma'am, you have to come up to the microphone.
Please give us your name and address.
What, mashed the button there? One sec.
Thelma Foster, 409 East Canfield Street. About the, the bulk and yard stuff, when the hurricane, when the hail came, you know, everybody had to clean up their yards. So, I did my little cleaning and I put out some of the trash. So I, the yard man came and picked it up, but I still had more to do. Now I have bags of trash, because I try to, you know, make it easier for him and me. So I always put the leaves and stuff in bags. So after he took that away, then I still had bags in the back, because I, you know, can't pull everything around to the front. So after he took that away, I had to chop down some more branches and I took those around. Now you all say I have to cut the branches up, right?
And bind them. Bind them.
Right, and bind, or put them in the bags.
Or put them in the bag.
Okay, so I'll, okay, so I'll cut those up and put those in bags or bind them. And so the, I think I got like five or six bags out there. So, then, I don't care when you pick them up, just as long as they get picked up. So, that's what's got to happen now, is just bind the branches so that he can pick those up.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You can leave that microphone on, it's not, it's fine the way it is. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve IMV 5, ordinance number 09-2022.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Please, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, item number 6, this will be 6 and 7. We have a second reading for public hearing ordinance number 11-2022.
Ordinance admitting future land use map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, admitting a parcel of land totaling .83 acres, generally located north of Little Bonnet Lake, south of East Pinecrest Drive, and on the east side of Lake Letilla, and on the west side of Lake Letilla Drive. Address being 1535 Lake Letilla Drive, Avon Park, from future land use of county low-density residential to city median density residential. Transmitting said amendment to the Port Department Economic Opportunity for notification purposes only, providing for securability, providing for conflict and binding or effective date.
Okay, Dana, you want to brief us on this? Yes.
So ordinance admitting the official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, admitting a parcel of land totaling 23 acres, generally located north of Little Bonnet Lake, south of East Pinecrest Drive, on the east side of Lake Letilla and on the west side of Lake Letilla Drive, address being 1335 Lake Letilla Drive, Avon Park, from zoning of county R3, multiple family dwelling, including motel in the hotel district to city R3 high-density multi-family residential, providing for securability, providing for conflict and binding and effective date.
Yeah. Dana? Yeah.
So the property is owned by Cruz Road and this application was submitted by Robert Cruz on behalf of Cruz Road. His request for future land use now commending in his own with 0.83 acres, located between Lake Waltzua and on the left side of the Pinecrest Drive. The purpose of this refund is to sign with city future land use and zoning for future multi-family development on the subject of hospital, given the policies to be known. So currently, it's been annexed, but a future land use is reserved, as I've not heard. The existing future land use is county low-density residential with a mix of 13 volumes per acre. And the existing zoning is county R3 multiple family bonded district, including Lotel and so forth. The proposed future land use would be city median density residential, which would be consistent with the processes to the norm, and that would permit up to 16 volumes per acre. Whereas the proposed zoning would be R3 high-density multifamily residential, which is also consistent with the zoning to the norm and the sound, also a lot of 16 volume per acre. Under the existing future land use, I briefly went over this last time, that the existing county future land use and zoning are inconsistent designations. You'll see there's a lot in the city, but you can see it at the time of filing now. In the county, the R3 multifamily zoning doesn't restrict density, what have we done with requirements? It only requires future land use. Whereas in the city, you have a future land use designation and is a requirement. So it's restricted density further than this can be done. So this analysis is just an apples to apples, or not apples to apples, but this is just future land use comparison instead of the zoning. In county, the low-density residential allows 13 per acre, whereas the city allows 16 per acre. So in county, it will allow a little 2 volumes on the subject of property, whereas in the city, it will allow 13, where it increases 11 volumes. This is consistent with the city of Avon Park home re-ends agreement, because it supports the goal of providing border growth and development compatible with surrounding areas. And it supports the city's objectives to implement compatible housing with limits of block sizes and housing size. Again, it's consistent on one more level, it supports level service standards for comparable water. But how would this impact public facilities and services? So it will be required to connect to city water, which is in close proximity and will create this, that, and that. There is capacity others to power this development to come through. However, the central sewer is too far away to connect, so this development will be served by onsite safety systems, as provided by. The primary roadway disperse aside is Route 205, which is a main road, which they will have to coordinate with county for access. And no public impacts are anticipated, because this is a previously approved residential subdivision. But again, they will coordinate with the county at the time of development. In terms of schools, a lot of the new agents admitted to contact all of our county's school facilities, but also since it will be bundled, at this time, it's proposed, which are both parcels to the north. And the proposed development plan really doesn't show much of an impact, so it's a number of students that would be allowed. We're considering this to reduce impact. But if it changes or when they actually receive a development, they will have to pay school rent to make sure that they have enough space. In terms of recreation, the city needs to have those service standards for recreation, so there's no major impact anticipated. And all the ways we've also developed the surface of development. In the past, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to improve and recommend the group the future land use management under the statute. And the city council also voted through for this, it's a 2. And so, for 12 points, 2 on the basis. I will send that over to council, any questions?
Okay. Any questions at this point for Dana? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, we do have at least one sign up. So, public hearing for ordinance number 11-2022 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on that can now do so. Our sign up is Mr. Joe Wright. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Joe Wright, 1519 Lake Letilla Drive. I'm the green one. The lot at issue, there's a house, and then there's a second house. So I'm the second house, south, okay? And I'm going to speak to both ordinances, because it's, my issue's the same one. And I did speak at planning and zoning, and would tell you what I told them. I do not oppose the Cruzes building condominiums on here. I just want to do it right. I only have so many public opportunities to view my concerns. My concern is simply this, that property, joining that is really in the nature of a single-family house. That's where we're impacted right next to it. And we, we just want them to do it right. We don't, for example, want that to end up being a parking lot with garbage dumpsters for all those condos. And you have some of your own standards, I'm familiar with regional planning council, they do great work, but in your council packet, page 43, objective 4, you talked about, you should develop these requests compatible and adjacent with adjoining land use and development. And you talk about buffering with green space and so forth. And in bold print, it says, "As a part of the site development review process, a landscape plan will be provided that buffers along the periphery of the project site for compatibility and buffering against adjacent properties." We're, we're just asking, and I know we're not at the site plan.
Right.
But for example, at planning and zoning, just that day, because it was not on the city's website the day of, when I pulled it, they handed out something with 40 units. And we probably would be okay with what was handed out that evening.
40 units for, for that whole?
For the whole thing, but it had the garbage north of that lot. But I noticed this application says 80 units, so we don't really have a site development application yet.
Right.
Just want to make sure that when we do, it's done tastefully. I mean, I'll be honest with you, not bragging, but those two houses south of this project actually add to the value of that kind of thing. Those are two of the nicer houses on Lake Letilla, we just want it in character with the neighborhood. So, I don't get that many opportunities to speak publicly. Look, I know the Cruzes, I wanted, I actually sat on the city council when we annexed in that big parcel. So I don't have a problem with that, I just, I'm also a businessman and I don't want dollar signs to get in the way and they try squeeze the last little. I just, I'm also a businessman and I don't want dollar signs to get in the way and they try squeeze the last little unit right up to the property line and so forth. Or to be done tastefully, and I just want to voice my concerns and we get a site plan, if I'm happy with it. I may not even come or if I'm unhappy with it, it'll be before you again.
Sure.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say, okay, thank you, any questions for me?
Anything for Joe possibly, but um, do you want to address the, the concerns? Central Florida Regional Planning Council's position.
It's, it's in here.
Right. Okay, you said you do have a representative of the. Is he willing to speak? Okay. Please give your name and address for the record there.
Good evening, my name is Ron Coffin, I'm civil engineer with Chesting and Skilling at two oh five Orange Street in Lakeland. The current site plan and I've been told that this is only about rezoning, but, but we have site plan. And our site plan has forty units on it, so. When we talk about the allowed density for this point eight three acres or, or the sixteen units per acre. We're talking about a site plan of about four and a half units per acre. Obviously, we're in the design right now, we've met with the city's utilities department. We, in fact, will be, there's a two inch water main in front of the site now and we've been instructed. And, and talking to the fire inspector at that meeting also. That we intend to update or upgrade that line size to eight inch. We also, I'll be meeting with Mr. Cruz this Thursday, we haven't made this decision yet. But it's with the cost of the fill and so forth, it's looking like we can, we, we might, we're, we're discussing running sewer. To the site as well, that will, you know, serve the entire area. But right now, the site plan that we have, I mean, you, you just, it's, it's me saying it, but it, it's forty units, eighty bedrooms. Forty-two bedroom units.
I see, this is going to be multi-story on this one?
Yes, sir. The buildings would, the plan I have, and we're not the architect, the plan I've seen. As the two outside units are two-story and the, of a four unit building, the two outside units are two-story. And the two inside units are three-story.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of surprised that a project this density would not have, be required to have sewer, is that? The situation, they're allowed to have septic for this, I, I, I find that kind of surprising.
The maximum, the maximum sewage load on, on any property, no matter the size on septic tanks. Is ten thousand gallons per, per day. I've talked to the health department because we were initially, I mean, the sanitary sewer is over eleven thousand feet away. Two, over two miles. But the, the, and so we were proposing, I mean, there's, there's no sanitary sewer nearby, really. So we were posing septic tanks initially. The two-bedroom unit, there's a table in the septic tank regulations and, and a one, well, on the four. The, the four units, there's eight bedrooms and a building only generates, according to these tables that the state uses. Six hundred and forty gallons per day, per unit. So there, there's, I mean, there's the density on the site as well.
But I, but I can't help but notice that it's next to a lake.
Well, and, 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 and that's interesting, yes, sir, the, and there's setback requirements. A minimum of fifty feet on this building or from this building to the ordinary high water line. But in fact, we're putting the septic tanks in the, if we do septic tanks, we'll put them in the front. Because we're required to tie into Avon Park sanitary sewer when it becomes available.
Yeah.
So it's easier for us to tie in, so we're not only the fifty foot to, from the building to the ordinary high of the building. And then the septic tank in front of the building, so we're, we're over a hundred feet from the lake, but.
Have you, have you done any soil analysis to see what the percolation is there?
We, we have, and we, we've done.
It's a double edged sword, on the one hand, you need percolation, you need percolation or for it to work. And if you have that much percolation, it may percolate into the lake as well.
Well, we're. Probably a hundred and twenty-five feet from the septic tank to the lake. The lands, there, there's a ridge between us and the lake. The health department requires us to present, and in fact, they will do their own permeability testing to. Before, before they issue septic tank permits. But the whole issue result, you know, boils down to whether sanitary sewer is, is available or not. As, as far as the definition of available, two miles is not available.
No, I understand, I wrote, I wrote that.
But we, you know, we're looking into that as well.
I appreciate that, because it does, it, it, you know, I just. Personally and professionally against septic systems on lakesides, we try to eliminate them as much as we can. And uh. So, thank you.
But the only can, citizen concern that's been raised is with the dumpsters. So the plan for the dumpster, are you going to have centralized dumpsters for all the units or is it going to be individual trashcans like?
On the architect's site plan, there are dumpsters provided for the units and they're in, in the enclosures.
Okay.
In screened enclosures.
Okay, so given the fact that someone has come here and voiced that concern. Please bear in mind, if there's any way to move it as far away from the other residents as possible, that would obviously be appreciated.
Absolutely, and, and we have to submit our site plans for review as well, so.
Right, better to mitigate.
But Mr. Cruz is not, we're, we're, I mean, not wanting to upset.
Right.
You know, but he intends to use his property as sure.
Right, and he's been a very good developer in our county, he's developed a lot of properties that everyone loves and enjoys. So we very much appreciate the development. Nope, any other questions? We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The public hearing is still open, is there anyone else wishing to speak or raise any concerns? Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance eleven dash twenty-two is now closed, are there any more questions from council?
Um, mayor, I have a question for the gentleman, the engineer here. When the Central Florida reported about the septic system. And that was the impression we got from the first reading, now he's coming back and saying that he's not sure. So when, when are you going to be sure, sir? At what phase?
Yeah, we'll have to get him back up to the microphone.
The reason why is, I'm, I'm sorry, so the reason why I'm, I'm asking the question is because of some of the questions that Mr. Burr. Brought up about the lake and all that, because I was under an impression, I'm quite sure everyone else due to the first reading. That it was going to be the septic system there, and now you're about doing something totally different. So my question is. At what point are you going to do so, at, at what point are you all going to make a decision on whether it's going to be septic or is it going to be sewer?
That decision needs to be made pretty soon. When the reason that we were talking about septic tanks two weeks ago on, on the first reading and even at the zoning hearing prior to that. Is because central sewer is, is not available out there, I mean, we can say to you. Clearly that it's not available, it's over two miles away. Mr. Cruz is, I mean, it costs a lot of money to run sanitary, and we're talking about, of course, fame, but with the stations. So we're, he has other properties that he might develop as well. That's what possibly will make, make it feasible for us to extend the city sewer to this site.
I see.
Being on the lake, I certainly agree that sanitary sewer, the, this development. As well as all those houses out there being served by sanitary sewer is better than being served by a septic tank. But, but the city sewer system is not available, we can develop by the regulations on septic tank.
Right.
Because of other issues, because of him having other properties, then, you know, we would like to develop on sanitary sewer. The ultimate decision is his and, and it'll boil down, it won't balance economically. But the fact that he has other properties in the area that, that the sewer would run by. Then maybe he's able to do that.
Yeah, what is your build time horizon?
Next year.
I see, okay.
The summer to fall next year.
Understood.
We can't require at this time for them to have central water or sewer. But there is something in the confidentiality plan that said, if you are located this close to sewer, then you must connect.
Right.
So that's what we're asking here in our staff report to say, we can't make them connect with a bit of all within that, because they're too far away. And that's what was the cost of the talk. Even if they don't have sewer right now, they're.
Sure. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Eric Wilson, fourteen forty-five, South Carolina. What are the requirements for sewer from the lake, I mean, what, what's the distance? Okay, the next question is, how many feet do you have to be from the city sewer? In order to say, okay, you've got to connect. And you, you said it was in an ordinance.
It's actually the code, we have a mandatory connection policy as well, but it's two miles as well in excess of.
Okay, okay, but how close do you have to be in order for?
Don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, so we gotta, we, we need to look at that ordinance then, okay.
Okay.
I might be a little bit of a question, as far as septic tanks, if we have a city sewer within one quarter mile. It's considered available, we're two miles.
Got it.
Yeah, that sounds right.
And the distance from the lake, you agree with seventy-five foot from the hot ordinary high watermark?
Thank you, she said seventy-five.
Yes.
I mean, if, if the development went in on.
Sure, very good, any other questions for engineer? Seeing none.
Code requirement, so.
Right. Thank you very much for your time. Public hearing for ordinance number eleven dash twenty-two is now closed. Is it, do we have a motion for this ordinance? The eleven dash twenty-two?
I'll make a motion, we approve orders number eleven dash twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll now call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll now have a second reading, or excuse me, public hearing for ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two. This is amending the future land use. Anyone wishing to speak on that can now do so. Seeing no hands.
Hello? Hello, can I speak?
Please give your name and address.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, I'm sorry, this is my first time of attending this meeting, I don't know how it works, I'm very sorry. My name is Helen, my last name is Annie Bonjai.
Your, your address?
The address is one oh one West, I mean, one oh one West Main Street. It was a big building there, the city destroyed, it's torn down totally now. I bought the property and before I bought it, I contacted the city of Avon Park, they were the one who gave me go ahead to buy it. That the former owner did not maintain it, it's a bad on property, if you can take full responsibility, city will support you.
Okay, so is this, do you have a question on ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two?
I'm sorry, I don't know about that, but I'm just trying here to be here to talk about my own problems with the city regarding to this very. Address, because it was my property, I bought it.
Alright, so ma'am, there, there will be a time at the end of the meeting for general questions, right now, we're just strictly discussing ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two. So if you don't have a question specifically on that ordinance, then you'll have to wait till the end of the meeting and call on you again.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. All right, did we have a motion?
Not yet.
All right, so the public hearing's still open, does anyone wishing to speak on it, public hearing for ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two is now closed. Do we have a motion for that ordinance?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second, now call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, next up, we have a second reading for. Ordinance number three dash twenty-two.
An ordinance submitting the official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, Florida. I mean, the parcel of land totaling point five oh acres from zoning of R one AA low residential. To R one A low residential, low density residential. Generally located north of, of east Cornell Street, south of east Canfield Street, east of County Road seventeen A. South and on the north side of Gates Drive, address being six oh one South Promdale Avenue, Avon Park.
Okay, this is a second reading, so we'll have a.
Oh wait a minute, we just pitched past one of those ordinances, we need to go ahead and pass it.
We did, we did vote.
We did both.
At what time?
No, separately.
Okay.
Yeah, we had separate public hearings as well.
I was looking something up.
No worries. All right, second reading, this will be a public hearing for ordinance number three dash twenty-two, public hearing is now open, anyone wishing to speak on this can now do so. Seeing no hands, public hearing for ordinance number three dash twenty-two is now closed. Do we have a, or excuse me, we'll get brief from Dana.
If you ever want to. But this is a property owned by A and N D A Properties LLC and N W M Properties holding LLC. It's a hackback property, they're requesting a refund for R one A A, R one A, located at seven one South Promdale. You can see the existing future menus, low density residential, which does not change. And the existing zoning is R one A A, also low density residential, they're requesting zoning change to R one A. And this is what I talked about last time, but it's either individual, see that this. Hackback property is already composed of four separate lots, but they didn't keep a lot size and requirements of the R one A of district. So in order to be able to develop, to develop two residences, they're not proposing four, they're proposing two. So in order to be able to develop, to develop two residences, they're not proposing four, they're proposing two. Um, and you split it down the middle, there are two of these seven R one A. You can see the difference here between the zoning district. R one A A requires twelve thousand square feet and more lot size and middle lot width eighty-five feet. For R one A, requiring ten thousand square feet and middle lot width of thirty-five. We went ahead and had the A survey and checked the lot. Right there, right under where it goes eight lot, it said that it needs zero point two five acres. And you can see that it is oversized by the bottom. Same with the second half, also meets the rate required me and is a consistent by the bottom. This change will result in an increase of one zone unit. Which supports the goal to provide enough development and marketable sound areas because we saw earlier in the map. The property's ignore also have all of a. And it supports the city's objectives. Informing how to put help in, who makes a lot of this. Central water is available, but again, in this government, central water is not available. Was able to look that up. It is a requirement of the property located with standard feet of sewer that it must connect. But this property is not located within. Solid waste is available. Um, it's located off of Gates Drive, which is a local street, by the way, from each of the coordinated group of the city. And one volume unit, it's really been impacted in some of these schools. So you don't expect any adverse impact there. And this meets the level of service givers in terms of recreation. Depending on zoning board, uh, so the president of the council on June fifteenth, the city council also voted to approve on first meeting on three point seven. I'm available for any motion.
Okay. Any questions for Dana at this point? Seeing none, because this is a second reading. We'll have a public hearing. Excuse me, we already had a public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve uh ordinance number oh three dash twenty twenty-two, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
There's no further questions. We'll now call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eight, we have approval of purchase of water meters for utilities manager, Mr. Rick Reed. I'm assuming Mark will take it in his.
This is again, Rick, Rick's homesick. This is, as you remember, the last meeting, the mayor talked Rick into putting in for more water meters, seeing it's hard to come by, so. This is from Avante Company for fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It's a sole source. And we're replacing them as fast as we can. And as Rick said last meeting. Um, they're kind of getting on back orders, so we want to get as many orders we can and keep them stuck so that we can keep changing out these meters that aren't working.
Just to be clear, these are meters that we would have purchased anyway. We're just purchasing them in advance, so we don't have to wait for more to come in.
Correct.
Keep installing them. Do we have a motion? Or any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve uh item number D eight.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Once again, is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, we have the approval of purchase of fire hydrants. Chief?
Alright, I can tell you about these. So we currently have twenty-two two-port hydrants in the city. Uh, ISO, which we kind of talked about a little bit earlier, um, does not like two-port hydrants. Because we don't have the option to have that big connection of the five and a half inch line on it. So in our ISO um evaluation a couple of years ago, that was one of the things we got kind of hit for was our two-port hydrants. Hydrants have a life expectancy of a hundred years. We have those two-port hydrants, which are about a hundred and twelve years old at this point. So this is just sort of one of those processes to get some hydrants and start replacing some of these old ones before they. They're they're directly connected to the main. There is no shut-off. So if they get hit, like you see in New York, the water shooting way up in the air, that's what we're gonna have. So this is just sort of a plan to get us past some of these with. Valves and everything so that they can be turned off if something happens. And and just to get a hundred and twelve-year hydrants. On and up to something up to date.
Sure. I remember a while back, we had an issue uh where we had fire hydrants that were not functioning. Did uh, do we have any that are currently not functioning?
Yeah, we have about three in the city right now.
Three.
We're working with Public Works to get that, but that part of what I just kind of hit on is part of the problem. We, we have some areas in the city that are very old.
Mm-hmm.
And they would have to shut down like a quarter of the city to be able to replace some of those hydrants. So this is sort of a coordinated effort to when we can figure out the good time and we might have to get a company in here to help some of these. But yeah, we're not doing bad right now with our observance hydrants.
Good. Anything else to add from staff?
I just add that it came up uh last week. I was in a meeting with Kimley Horn. Reference to the master plan for the water that should be done by the end of this month, and this came up. And they pointed out there may be some shut-off that they don't know, or there's the um, the old pipes have been there since the twenties. Maybe they're six inch, maybe they're down about a three inch now. So it was like, it's actually being looked at through them on the master plan too.
Got it.
I have a question for um chief.
Go ahead.
Chief, is this um company Ferguson Water Works, is this the company we usually go go with?
Yeah, in fact, so this is where I'm not going to be able to do well with, because this actually sort of coordinated with Public Works. They're the ones that. That has submitted this purchase order. I don't know if Rick's name is on the top. I'm not the one that called them. I give the specifications to Rick of what we want, and then he goes out and kind of shops around to the different companies. So they probably have a different company, couple of companies they use, but this is who I think they use quite a bit is Ferguson to get a lot of their stuff.
Okay. Okay, well, they're gonna save a whole lot of questions. I had a whole lot of questions.
Well, you can ask. I can try.
Well, I was just, I guess I'm Googling, what what do you, since you'd achieved, what's the average price for uh hydrant?
Oh, I.
You have no idea?
No.
I don't know. I just thought, okay, my next question is, are we just purchasing the hydrant or we doing the installation, the service? So because when I Googled it, average price for hydrant is nine thousand five hundred and twenty to about eleven thousand nine hundred. For just one. So I was trying to.
Yeah, I I think we can get a much better price than what you're gonna find on the internet.
Right, and and they last a hundred years.
Yeah.
Well, but on that, we've piggybacked up Collier County. So they went out to bid before they could go into the contract. We can piggyback off, got the best prices. But Ferguson is where we, Public Works buys almost ninety percent of their stuff, so.
Yeah.
So so once again, is it just a hydrant or are they gonna come in and install it? How does that work?
The the price that you would see in front of you is just for the fire hydrant and the valves and pipes and all that to connect it to the city main. That does not include any installation at all. Public Works believes they can do the vast majority of these. So that will be much cheaper, but if there's some that they can't, we might have to contract this out to a different company, which will cost a lot more. Which will bring that back, you know, that'll come, have to come back in the future if we do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we we purchased several fire hydrants a couple of years ago, and I know they were over four thousand dollars each, so it's actually. Far better priced than then and even considering all the inflation that has taken place since then.
A lot of it has to do with the layout of of it, or it's gonna be on a T, how many valves you're gonna have for it. And where the thrust block is and so on, whether it's a pre-poured thrust block or poured place.
What he said.
Rick told me that in layman's terms.
Alright, any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve item number D nine for fourteen fire hydrant, please.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, this will be an update for current total payments outside council and consultants for the airports. I see Melody's name. Are you taking it?
Yes, sir. Uh, you have in your packet a listing of the costs. Attorney's fees, legal fees that we have so far um spent on the airport lease agreement. It totals one one hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Of that, sixty-nine thousand six twenty-six is Clary Consultants and one hundred and twenty-five. Six forty-seven fifty is Kaplan and Kirch.
Okay, now. Councilmember Bernard uh had some questions last time.
Yeah, one of the questions I have for now is just that that is what through March or April this year?
It's today. Yes, sir.
Oh, it's today? And um. Do we have any idea of how much expenditures are going to increase to final AIPP plan?
Well, we're not moving forward unless you give us um permission to and pay them until we get the due diligence grant, which we'll pay for.
And how much is that?
I don't know. I I, outside council said if we, if it was to be paid for now, just to put in the AIPP. Um, plan to them would be a minimum of forty thousand dollars, and that wouldn't include the lease. So that's what we're waiting on unless you want to spend the.
Essentially, we're basically having to do everything over again with this new process, so. If you want to know how much it would cost, it's probably a fair guess to look at how much it was prior to the change. Add that up, it's probably about that much, I would say. Because the legal fees are gonna be the same. The only thing that we're not having to redo is some of the estimations, the uh, not estimations. But the valuations of the airport and things like that.
Yeah, and there's and there's money in that will be hopefully if we get this due diligent grant for um survey and other things. The airport, part of that five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right. It's pretty much, in my view, it's not really worth pursuing unless we can get that grant and go that way.
Correct, because all, you're right, all we're talking about is attorney fees. It's a lot more fees to it.
Right.
So are you saying that the expected attorney fees would just be forty thousand, that just to give you the grant?
No, that would just, just to put in the AIP, AIPP, um, the grant's in. If we get the grant, then we have to do the AIP program, all that paperwork to put in for it. That's where the attorney's fees are gonna come. Plus, we have have to do surveys and there's, there's other things. We were just on a call the other day for what was that? Is that the, oh, the ec- or yeah, environmental plan? Because we found out that, well, FAA approved that we could use our um, Kimley Horn at the airport, the contract we have with them. And we were talking to one of their engineers. She's out of actually Salt Lake City. And on that, we did have to use Maul because he's the one that knows what he's asking for, what we need to get a scope from them. So when we do get the grant, we're ahead and we've got the uh, they can do it, so.
Well, there's also the aspect of, they asked us to do it this way, and being that we're at their sole mercy. Uh, we should probably do it the way they want us to do it. And they, meaning the FAA.
Correct.
Anything else on this? There's a somewhat of a timeline there. You can kind of see how the fees have stacked up. There was obviously front-end loaded. There was a section in there that was heavier than others, but um, is there anything else you're trying to figure out there?
Were you saying that we expect the toll fees to be twice what they are now?
No, what I was getting at is, on here, there's a change, so it went from, right, so everything that was pre-change, if you add all that up. It should be about that much, you know, and we're guessing, you know, don't take that to the bank, but I'm just saying logically. Because because essentially, it's it's the same process, it's just a different route.
It, to add to that, part of that five hundred and thirty thousand dollar due diligence grant is broken down with the estimate is. We don't have in front of us, but if you want it next time, we can bring it for what it shows for legal fees.
Does that grant have overages? If it goes over what they think it would cost?
No, actually, we wrote that in there and they said it, it contingency wasn't allowed.
Okay.
Now we're on hold for everything until the grant comes, so is that correct?
We are, unless you want to move forward and spend more of the city's money on the um, the attorney.
Is that moving along any faster?
Oh, yeah. But outside council, you know, thinks it should be in and um, but it's, like I said, he. He estimated many forty thousand dollars for him, which doesn't include doing a lease when that's done, so.
Right.
So really, that's your choice. You wanted to move forward, then you got to vote, you get three votes, move forward, continue paying the. And um, I I'll tell you, I I actually came up, JT said he'd pay for it. And I got, I met, actually saw deputy mayor when I was leaving out there. I was out the airport talking to JT. And um, he's hit me up, wants to get lunch, coffee this week to talk. But I ran it by him because he said at one point he would pay. And when I told him we'd need that money up front, he said he'd have to get with his board, so.
Well, if uh, they're willing to pay for it, and that obviously changes things, but I'm not interested in uh, expending any more money. Until we see the outcome of this grant. But.
Yeah, they already owe quite a bit.
I'm but one of five.
Which I've told them about, but no, I agree with you. And that's why I said if he wants to do this, put the money up front.
So, um, Mark, did he give you a timeframe?
No, I spoke to him Thursday or Friday, Friday I ran it. Um, and he said he'd have to get with his board.
Yeah.
So, and I meet him this week for lunch, whatever, I'll have a chat with him.
You buy lunch?
Huh?
You buy lunch?
Probably.
Okay, so wait to see the outcome of that meeting. Obviously, if they're willing and and able, then uh, you bring that back to us at our next meeting and. We'll discuss it then. Any any other questions on uh, these fees or timeline or anything?
No, I'm good.
Seeing none. City manager report?
Alright, well, I. In there, I might just pull up now, but uh, update that uh, I put the email in there that I heard back from Bart, what he told me. And I had filed up with another one. He sent back Thursday, said, good evening, Mark. We are still working on the issue. The city is still competing for the funds. So that's all I know.
Okay.
Um, city hall windows, second floor are in. Um, it's quieted everything down big time, like wow. Um, AC is obviously working better. There's just a couple of problems because they were double hung windows, a couple of the top ones have fallen down. I talked to the owner, he's, they've got the manufacturer gonna come and take care of them, but um. It it's a big improvement, obviously, from the ones that were rotten, almost fallen out. Classic cladium seat barn roof is in process. And it'll be done by Wednesday. And we've already, Andy Mogul's already got a hold of the contract, gonna do the the bathrooms. And they'll start in as soon as they're done. And just to remention, I already brought it up, the master plan for water. Um, again, was in a meeting with Kimley Horn last week at Public Works and they, I asked him for a timeframe for council. And he said, right now, he's looking at the end of the month, so.
Anything else on the report? We have a woman that has been waiting patiently online. Are you still there to ask your question? Helen?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am. So do we need her name and address again?
Yes.
Okay, please, please give your name and address again for us, please.
My name is Helen Anibon Jai. The address is one oh one West Main Street in Avon Park.
Yes, ma'am. What is your question?
Yeah, I was the one who purchased this property. Before I purchased the property, I did my research. I found out that there's a little problem. Connected to code enforcement with the city with the house. And I called the city of Avon Park. Office. And they, they explained to me, I would that, okay, yeah, the city want to sell the property, the city knew about it. That the code enforcement can be waived. It's only because the owner abandoned that property, it's not well-kept. That if you promise you'll keep the place nice, the city will work with you. You can go ahead and buy it. That was the reason I purchased this property from those people that is, that they sold the property to from tax deed.
Okay.
And after I purchased it, that one said, okay, I've already filed to quiet the title. I'm working on it. It's going to be ready soon. But for the meantime, we forever put quiet title, I start paying your property tax, maintain the property. Which we, we don't want to go, I guess, with what they said, and we first spoke to the city. I will keep, we kept paying and we went to the city. Okay, we want to start working on this property. I will keep, we kept paying and we went to the city. Okay, we want to start working on this property. The city said, told us to go and bring our plan. Look for architecture to draw your plan, to bring it to us. We need, we want you to provide a parking space. And the city will look into it if they approve it before you can go ahead to do any work in that property. We said, okay. We went to the next three blocks, the next three houses to us, cop engineer. We went to them, we told them, okay, this is our issue. The city wants us to draw and a plan that they can approve before we can start project anything on this property. Could you please help us look at it and see what we can do, how we can do it? And they walked through it, they look at it, they said, you know what? This property going to require a lot of work. But we can help you, we can do whatever you want us to draw, but you know what? This area is very, they they have a problem parking. I said, this is what the city told us to. So you know what? Let, don't let us discuss with city on your behalf to let the city buy this property from you. You can get the money and buy another property. I said, okay, if you think that would be the best option, so yeah, that would be the best option because you're gonna spend a lot of money or you're gonna nearly tear half of this house off. I said, we don't mind to tear it off, but if this is, if you advise city to use this place as a parking that it will help your business and other business and everything in this place, okay. Discuss with the manager. And he did, we go, what, he went, he came back, he told us that he has already discussed with them. And they were talking about it, they're gonna see, they're gonna come back, get back to us to resolve the issue. And that, by that time, Ms. Sodala was still a secretary. We called her, we let her know. She said, yes, they did mention that they're gonna buy this property from you. Because what? The city just bought a lot of properties from so many owners because they want to make use of it. That since this place, we help the city for parking and it will improve the area, the business and everything will buy it from you. That was where where we ended the discussion. All of a sudden, all of us, I knew, I saw that the person was supposed to complete their own uh, what do you call it, a quiet title, they didn't complete it. What's going on? The owner of it, so they found out the city filing for closure. For what? I kept calling them, oh, you don't call us, we don't know anything about it. I said, well, you don't know anything about it. You knew, we bought this property from you. You connected with the city. You have more chances and uh, and more opportunity to discuss and to turn this over with the city. Though we've already, city and us, we've already discussed, but we don't know what is going on now. We are just we don't know what's gonna be to you and the city. You want to buy the property back, you want the city to give you the money or what is going on? We don't understand the area. Then we call the city. All of a sudden, what we knew is that Mr. um, the one that was previous manager went to file a paper of five hundred thousand lien. I said, but the fire told us the way for these liens is not even up to that. And again, since we 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 own this property, we'll be keeping it. We never violate any rules. We never get any ticket that we, that will put us into risk of paying every day or 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 violate the code of enforcement. That's just where the announcement started. And the owner said, of a sudden now, city broke down the house. They did everything. The other people that we paid, we, they don't contact all the same. We've already done what we have to do. If I put your quiet title there, you'll be pay, city recognized you as the owner, you have to take it with the city. When I called the city, the city would tell me, told me, tell me that, okay, we get court paper, we don't want to discuss with you. So what's going on better? This is not what we planned. I've never heard any city that foreclosed and take property from people with the only, the person that is not interested in the property. If city, and this, and this, I think we've already discussed that that I knew the city want to use it. I'm not fighting with the city. I've already made my plan before. I probably bought so many things I wanted to use in that place. I want to make it stop.
Ma'am, this is a, a, you know, quite a lengthy story there, and I know that this property, I believe we refer to the property as the Wild Building.
Yeah, this been, it's a matter of litigation, so I I would just advise that we've, we're represented by council on this. And on July sixth, two thousand twenty one, the circuit court entered a final judgment, which dismissed all claims that she had against the city. Granted final judgment as to all the plaintiff's claims. The time for appeal expired and no appeal was taken, so really, there isn't anything left with regard to this matter. And uh, I think it's just a an end around to that case. And um, I I just, I would just let me say that um, you know, if she wants to speak, have her attorney speak with our council, then that's fine, but as far as we're concerned, the case is done and um, the matter's over.
And she's been told that by me. She's got all the public records and I sent it down to clerks to get the ones down there. So she's been in and spoke to me and I pretty much told her what you just told me.
Yep, so this played out over the course of several years. Yep. Alright, so ma'am, after hearing that, is there anything else to add?
Yes, I'm just appealing to the city because now they've made me and my family homeless. They already discussed that they're going to use the place for parking. This is a beneficiary, something situation for the city. I'm begging the city. I have no power. I have no money.
Unfortunately. Ma'am, unfortunately, it's been litigated, so we really can't do anything for you. So if you want to speak uh any further, you'll have to speak through your council with with our council, so.
Better, what I'm saying, like, before it, before it went to council, city and I, we've already discussed. I have somebody who really went on my behalf to discuss with the city.
I I understand, but there's nothing that we can do at this point, so if there's nothing that we can do, then there's no point in discussing it.
But I'm begging the city. I'm begging the city. I'm begging the city. I'm begging. I have no money. I have no power to get attorney. I'll spend, I'll send all my.
Thank you. Alright, is there anything else to bring for the city? Or any questions?
No.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.